Hosted the school supplies and I just told her that was wrong.
Hello.
Hello.
What?
Where'd you sneak in?
Phone.
Sneaky?
Oh, where is it? You ready, sister?
Baby. Did y'all get the reporter?
Okay, do you want me to start it?
Yes ma'am.
Oh. We are ready for you, dear.
Okay, thank you. Mayor.
Yes ma'am.
Autumn.
Yes ma'am.
Carl. I'm so sorry, excuse me, Sarah.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Stand for her, please. Father in heaven, we come to you tonight and we just thank you for the opportunity to be together. Father, I just lift up the people that are usually in the room and they're not here tonight. I pray for healing upon their bodies. Father, I also ask that you would give us the wisdom and the discernment that we need to make the decisions to better our city. I want to thank you and praise your name. In Jesus's name, amen. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. I'm so shocked, I need to talk to you. Consideration and action on consent agenda. Do we have any staff reports or any commissioner that would like to pull something?
May I motion to approve?
Hold second.
Eric.
Yes.
Autumn.
Yes ma'am.
Mayor.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Alright, item six. Public appearances, petitions, remonstrances, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the city commission members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda. Anyone? Okay. Number seven. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the agreement with J. Trevor Hammons P L L C to approve general legal services as city prosecutor at a rate of $125 per hour and travel time at $65 per hour with extraordinary costs and expenses to be reimbursed to the prosecutor. Mr. Hammons, are you here?
I am, ma'am.
Well, come on up.
Thank you.
Introduce yourself.
My name is Trevor Hammons, John Trevor Hammons, I go by Trevor Hammons. I've been an attorney since 2004. I started off with the A.G.'s office under Drew Edmondson for five years in the Environmental Protection Unit. I then went to the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality and I was there from 2009 to 2000, last month, actually. So I did land, air, ECLs, local services. I'm also a tribal prosecutor for a tribe down in Texas.
Which tribe is that?
Hiccupoo Traditional Tribe of Texas.
Okay.
And so right now, I went out on my own and I do tribal court assessments as a BIA subcontractor and the initial welfare prosecution as well. And just, I live in Norman, so this was perfect and welcome the opportunity to serve and be a prosecutor. But that's me and that's ya.
Thanks, Trevor.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
I make a motion that we approve the agreement with Mr. Hammons to provide legal services. Got it? Okay, hold second.
Autumn.
Yes ma'am.
Sarah.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes. Welcome, ma'am.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
The guy who signed one sent it to me, but I'm about to ask for it. Thank you.
There you go. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you very much, I appreciate meeting you.
Alright, number eight. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to name Joe Barta as primary member and Eric Lovelace as alternate member of the Payne County Countywide Communications Committee. Staff report on this. Just kind of straightforward from our packet.
I have to tell you that I'm not Bob tonight, I apologize. What I know is what's in the packet.
Okay, well, I believe Bob mentioned it. Was it last month or before last? He did talk about it, so. I am, any commissioners, anything about that? I'm kind of impressed with the program. It looks like it's going to be beneficial for our city and the entire county. So, I didn't see any cost on there. Is that a grant from, do we?
I think, Mayor, if I talk this, because it's what I think, it's not.
Okay.
No, I think that it's covered with our company.
Okay. It is.
Is that correct?
Yes.
I do remember that now from my notes, yes.
The cost that would be going forward, replacing the end units or that type of thing.
Because I, if I remember, Bob was the one that kind of suggested it and took it to the sheriff's department. So, okay. There we go. Other questions? I, I make a motion that we name Joe Barta as a primary and Eric Lovelace as the alternate to this communications committee.
Hold second.
I think this will be good.
Mayor.
Yes.
Autumn.
Yes ma'am.
Sarah.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Alright, item, agenda item number nine. Consideration and discussion regarding the Kirk Avenue project with project manager Michael Taylor, Cowen Group Engineering. How you doing, sir?
Good, how are you?
I'm great.
Thanks for having me tonight. I'll update that the next two items are for the project. We've been working with the contractor to get everything reconciled and we'll be making recommendations on the two items. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I do, but it's the next item.
Okay.
So, anything else? Questions? Great.
After these next two items, is there anything outstanding?
The ad build drawings, which should be done next week. So we'll submit those to the city and then, as we discussed, if we need to have a review, have them disseminate those out for review and then meeting.
Okay. Can we move on to number 10? Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve change order number two, final reconciliation for the Kirk Avenue project in the amount of funded by the general obligation bond in the amount of 1.8 million, approved by an election on April 2nd, 2019.
These are amendments of quantities as we went through. You know, we found water lines that needed moved. We found some cost savings here so we could deduct some things or alternates. We had some additional sidewalk in there as we went through. There were portions that we had left because they were in good shape when we designed it, but we had some pretty bad freezes. Things started deteriorating as we got closer to them. So it was our judgment to remove and replace as we came through and some additional piping for the storm drains was required. There's alt, or not alternates, amendments to previously agreed upon bid quantities. And then there's also some new items. Most of the new items were the water line issues that we didn't necessarily have bid items for as we ran into them and negotiated what those costs would be for valves or a different size water line lowering. You know, we found a two inch, we didn't have any two inches in our plans and it had to be lowered to get it out of the street.
So, questions?
Yes.
There's like a $6,428.58 difference between last month's reconciliation change order number two and this month's change order number two. And like, you just described some of the differences that happened, but I broke it all down. Where did the, the solid, my, my copy for this month is really kind of grainy, so it's really hard for me to read. Had to read with flashlight, but I am old, so. Not even my bifocal. So, the solid strap sodding, where did that go? Solid?
So, some of those areas that we weren't going to disturb where the sidewalk was replaced, we required additional sodding and then.
And so that added 34,000?
It was a substantial amount of sawed, it was seven, 7,000 more square feet than we anticipated. But when you take out those areas, the, you know, we have machinery that's tearing up quite a bit as it's going through, but we need to stabilize around that sidewalk. And then some additional on some of the ditches was required.
Yeah, there was a lot of additions. Manhole, adjust the valves, some valves.
Some of the valves that we found were buried under the pavement. So, I think we estimated seven and there was 10 total.
So on number 16, the, I think that's, like, my, mine's grainy, so the six inch concrete driveway?
So.
What's that total cost at the end there?
Eighty-seven.
That's what I thought. Actually, I thought it was 60.
But if you look at alternate six, number one and two, that was a swamp for making the intersections more stable and also easier and quicker to construct.
Right, that's a $15,000.
Well, both A and B on that one are the savings.
That's a big difference between 50,000 approximately and 87,000. Now, at the, at the bottom, again, I apologize, mine is grainy. The justification, I couldn't quite read it.
Traffic control extension is for additional time. The pavement, borrow, sidewalk, change for field changes in construction to accommodate slope construction methods. Other changes in drainage pipe and inlets are per field means with contractor and landowners. Additional sidewalk is to adjust for unseen field conditions and current condition of the sidewalk. Excavation in the park is to accommodate drainage in the park per prior conditions on Methodist Avenue. And then the water line lowerings are from water lines, not previous light, identified in survey or historical maps. So those are the water lines we found that we did not have marked.
Almost the same wording from last month.
Correct, the reconciliation is, is still the same. We were still going back and forth with the contractor on those quantities and settled on the amount.
I'm just, I'm asking questions for our community and I'm asking questions for myself.
No problem. That's why I'm here to answer.
Ma'am.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Because I got a little lost on the 87,000 and the alternate one-two thing. Would you mind just saying that one more time so that I make sure I'm getting it right?
So, when we put additional six inch concrete in, that took out asphalt paving A and B.
Oh, so it was instead of?
Yeah, and so the total asphalt deduct was 87,000.
What number is the asphalt one?
It's the last two on the base bid items. So alternates.
High A and B?
Yes.
Okay. The 3,000 difference in, okay.
So it was almost a wash, right?
I got you.
I just wanted to make sure I clearly understood it, thank you.
Yep, uh, thank you for asking that question because it did clarify it a little bit. Okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
Michael, the, after this change order number two reconciliation, the total contract amount to date is a million six fourteen and change. And we're gonna add another pay application in the next. Do you have, is that right?
So the last pay application?
The last pay application.
This will be rolled into the, the retainage payment that's already in there and represented.
So ultimately, we're gonna run that 1.6 from a, from a 1.8 million dollar bond issue?
Well, the bond issue is to cover the entire project. We had right away easements.
I'm tracking with you.
Yeah, the soft costs.
How far, how far different are we from, okay. The original contract amount was 1,519, 162?
Yeah, so it's a 6.3% difference in the original contract. That's 3.3 amendments and 3% new items.
Is that pretty low, typically low, 6.3?
If you're going over 10%, there's a problem. Or you, like I said, we had a lot of water lines that, that we didn't have marked or, or know where they were.
Make a motion to approve.
Hold second.
Eric.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Justin.
Stain.
Okay, item agenda number 11. Still there. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve current construction contractor play, pay application number 18. Containage for the Kirk Avenue project in the amount of 86,812 cents funded by the general obligation bond in the amount of 1.8 million, approved by an election on April 2nd, 2019. Report, sir, please.
So this is the final payment. I know we call the last one the final payment, but this is the final payment to the contractor. It's the retainage that we hold throughout the contract of 5%. So the last payment we had was the final for the project. Then this is to return the retainage. The contractors have started doing that because sometimes retainage can get held out due to punch lists, items and things like that.
Is that what retainage is?
The, it's required by state law to hold out 5% of every payment so that you don't get to a point where the contractor just says, well, I've done enough. I've been paid. And then they can leave. I know we have bonds and things, but that does happen sometimes. And so you hold 5% as required by state law. It may have changed recently, actually, but we did have 5% on this one for the specs.
Motion to approve.
Hold second.
Eric.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Uh, I'm staying.
Okay. Item number 12. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve Becco LLC contractor pay application number two for the final RV lift station project in the amount of 14,410.85 funded through the American Rescue Plan Act and Rural Economic Action Plan Grant. Sir.
This is the, the final payment for this project. They went ahead and rolled the retainage into it. So it's the last payment accepted. Items they had left on it were the air relief valves that we had on the forest lane. They got installed last week early.
So this one's complete?
Yes.
So it is, it is a completed job?
An operations job. With staff went out for startup and were trained how to use it and how to check flow and make sure it's working properly.
Does the additional pressure cause some of the other leaks in town? We've seen kind of some other leaks happen at similar times. Does that have any, do you know if there's any correlation?
It shouldn't be because this, this sewer pressure line goes to a manhole and it's its own line for the lift station.
And it's significantly far away from the other leaks, wasn't it?
I'm not sure exactly where the leaks are. I know there was one on this one that we had to fix because the subcontractor hit it. But I'm not sure where the other leaks were.
I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Mayor.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jay. Alright, item number 13. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and select candidate for perfectly industrial development authority trust. One open appointed trustee position with term ending April 30th, 2023. No ma'am?
No ma'am, sorry.
We keep trying. Okay. Item number 14. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and candidate, and select candidate for Perkins Library Trust. One open trustee position with term ending June 30th, 2025. We're gonna have to beat the streets, people.
And, and just for the record, we have no applicants.
We have received no letters of interest for either. I'm sorry, yes.
My card was clear on that.
Disappointing. That is disappointing.
Has the city received any feedback on that? Any interest, anybody asking questions?
Not to my knowledge.
Yes, not to you.
I asked Bob Friday, no, Thursday. Thursday was the last time I asked Bob and he hadn't heard anything.
Any suggestions on how we can beat the streets and fill those in?
I mean, we've done twice for the data, only once for the library trust. I'm happy to do it again. The flyers are up.
Okay.
Could, could we potentially ask our local newspaper to advertise for free for us?
No.
Tammy. I guess it's pretty much a consensus that we love you.
Could we request that the Perkins Chamber of Commerce advertise the opening on their Facebook page? Because I know that they have a lot of, lot of different followers. Sent an email. I don't know about their Facebook page, but they did send an email. I was thinking if chamber members, we could request on their social platforms.
I, I mean, I, I, that request has been made, whether it happened, I can't tell.
I see, thank you.
And have to do it again, yes.
So we just drop back and pl-?
It's free. Or we pay?
Keep trying, okay. Alright, agenda item 15. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to accept a one-year maintenance and repair guarantee of the infrastructure improvements and utilities dedicated to the city by KW Investment LLC. Staff report or Mr. Wells, did you want to say anything?
I'll say, I'll give you, and then, on the staff.
Why don't you go ahead first?
You've got the letter in your file.
Yes, ma'am.
And other orders is required, either maintenance bond or some form of guarantee that the, the infrastructure that they're putting in, in the minute development will last for a year. And that if it doesn't, they'll come back and re-.
Correct, essentially is what that is.
And if they don't, then we can call the letter credit in this case. We'll fix, go fix it ourselves and, and use their money to do it. So that's, that's essentially what these are.
Right, correct.
Do you want to add anything?
No, we've never had a problem here. I've been developing since 1970 here and I've never had a problem with the city when we promised to do something, we did it.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay. I make a motion that we accept.
Pardon me, Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, yes.
I didn't know we were moving on that quickly.
I usually ask, I apologize.
No, 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 you're fine, you're fine. I just want to ensure that the two letters of credit and somebody on staff has affirmed that that's a sufficient amount of funding to. There's a percentage of engineering cost or something, just, I just, just some assurance that those numbers match something that's been verified by staff.
That's the next item on the agenda.
Okay, okay.
The, um, the letter from HBW Companies is the guarantee. It's not to a particular amount, it's, it's, um, I, so I misspoke, I apologize. I misspoke. It's been a long day, I apologize. The letters of credit are not related. When I said that we could call their letters of credit, I did not mean them. Okay? There's two different issues. One is a maintenance bond or guarantee. The other is what's called a performance bond or guarantee. The first, the item on the agenda regarding the, that we're on at this point is the maintenance guarantee. So I did not misspeak when I said we're talking about one year. The one year.
So for the, so for the first year, there's a guarantee that KW Investment will, will ma, will repair or maintain at their own expense for the first year?
Exactly, and we don't have any money to go after K now, we just have to go after the company.
Okay.
So, that's why he was saying, yeah, we'll, you know.
Do what they said.
Yes. So I did misspeak when I said that the, um, that the letters of credit were related to this item because they are not. This is just a guarantee of the corporate entity.
Are you comfortable, Tammy, with this, with this letter being binding to, to your satisfaction?
I am in this instance. I do, I would say that that's not going to always be, depending on the facts, I may have a different situation at hand, but Mr. Wells has done other subdivisions in this, in this area and never been required to post a maintenance bond or a guarantee. And so, um, this was a stretch for him. And, uh, so this, I, I think this is a good resolution.
Okay. I'll second the motion.
Mayor, did you make that motion?
I did, ma'am.
Thank you. Mayor.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
Uh, yes ma'am.
Item agenda number 16. Uh, consideration, discussion, and possible action to accept a letter of credit from Exchange Bank ensuring the actual construction of certain Kinderwells Section 9 sidewalk improvements according to the plans and specifications approved by the planning commission within two years from the date of approval of the final plat.
Okay, let me talk for a minute, please. This is the performance bond or, or guarantee surety that we need. And that is if we're going to accept infrastructure, which you're considering doing next, on the next agenda item, if we're going to approve a final plat and some of that infrastructure has not been completed and the code requires us to get some type of bond or surety showing that, that covers the amount that of what has not been completed. So the, in this case, we're talking about sidewalks. And we're talking about a, a set of sidewalks that the builder is supposed to build, put in when he builds the houses in the next two years. Or a set of sidewalk, and a, and a second set of sidewalks that the developers want to put in, I think fairly quickly. But because the developer wants the plat approved tonight, he's required to do the performance bonds. The way that the, um, the amount of these, I say bonds, but it's really, in this case, the letters of credit. The way that the letters of credit, the, the way that the amounts were determined for these letters of credit was through an engineer's estimate of what it would cost to finish the work. The developer's engineer estimated that. So we had our engineer look at it, and made an agreement that that amount is, is fair at this point. We don't know what the cost of concrete is going to be in two years, but hopefully we won't find out because the sidewalks will all be hit within two years. The, the code requires the planning commission to set the amount of the bond or surety. So this, these amounts were set by, let me raise that, at least they've started this and it's over. The code requires the planning commission to recommend to you the amounts. And so if there was some issue about what the amount. And so if there was some issue about what the amount is, or how it was calculated, that, that should have worked itself out at the planning commission. There wasn't, uh, an issue. And so they did set these amounts, um, last night. But they are based on some, there is a, a good, uh, two engineers have looked at it and estimated that as the cost. Let us, anything else you need to know about these?
Are you comfortable with this process?
I am. I've actually, um, developed this form for this program, local letter of credit for them. I'm surprised, but.
Did they accept it to your form?
They accepted my form, like, same. But I, so yeah, it's, which is always, it's probably kind of wise because then, you, they, then, you know, what am I gonna say if they use my form? I can't say I don't like that.
I do have a question. Is it the availability of construction materials? Why, why are they not just being done at the same time? Like that, maybe that's a very simplistic question, but.
And that'll let, um, Diego, if you're interested.
Yeah. How are you guys?
How are you, sir?
Don't say your.
I'm Diego Enzisberger, I'm with Gelson Associates, I'm an engineer. And Michael Taylor. So, the reason that we're trying to get this done now is because it costs money. And he's trying to close and it's something we can do, we're providing everything you guys need. We're extending the sidewalk out to thirty-three, so we're happy to do it. We're happy to do it. And we can't build all the sidewalk because builders are gonna go in there and tear it up, so.
I just, it was just a simple question. Simplicity sometimes is.
Yeah. It's a lot of crossing lines.
One of the points here is, and this happens, um, like he said, if you could put in the sidewalks now and then the builder goes in to build the house, they may tear it up and whatever. But if you wait for the builders to rely completely on the builders to put in the sidewalk, what do you do when three lots don't sell? You know, who, who then finishes those, those sidewalks? And that's the point of these guarantees, is if we're two down, two years down the road and nobody has finished it, we go in and finish it and we call their letter credit for how much that, that walk that was.
And Bob brought up the route, you know, along, along to the drainage ditch and over to thirty-three. You know, that's a good idea, we're, we're doing that, so.
Thank you.
And there also, let me just also, never mind. I'll talk about that on the next. It's an also, but it's not on this.
I, I, I'm already, I, I got you, I'm ahead of you two. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jinx.
Aaron?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Okay, moving right along to, um, agenda item number seventeen. Consideration, discussion and possible action to approve the final plat and accept the public ways and service and utility easements for Kinderwells Section Nine. So this was moved from last month, correct? This was an agenda item?
Of the issues that have been, um, discussed today.
Okay. So, any other info on that, or just?
Do you want to see it?
Sure.
Plat?
Yes.
Has planning commission approved it?
Planning commission approved it last night.
And you've reviewed it?
I have not reviewed it.
I'd like to see it.
You want me to come down?
I'll hold it.
Actually, I'm gonna look at your copy while you're doing that.
Sure.
Sorry.
You don't mind coming down there?
Yeah.
I got copies here, I can only hold one.
So where are we looking? Sarah and Justin, y'all share.
Okay.
You're okay.
Here's Williams right here. This is commercial lot, highway thirty-three is here, this is the old church. This road is gonna connect all the way down here to, uh, give the drainage channel is right here. So that sidewalk cross and then it will go all the way to. This is the lift station outlot right here. Tammy, I think wanted to talk about that.
The last, I have not. The plat, uh, was the state planning commission making last wire. And, and I've heard Diego say to the planning commission, here's the lot A where the, um, there's an easement for the lift station and that hurt my ears because we don't want just easements for where our, our public construction is. We want, to be simple. We want the land, we want to own it, where our infrastructure is. And so, um, my understanding is that this lift station has actually been there for a while. And it sounds like we may actually own part of that. When you're calling it Lot A or. Uh, Lot A.
This is here.
Yeah.
Although it doesn't seem to be showing on, on the records, but, um, so when I talked with Mr. Wells and Diego today, um, based on the understanding issue, that they're willing to do a deed of dedication with the, for, to, to actually transfer the ownership of the land, not just grant us an easement, for the entire Outlet A. And so we are gonna be working on that. That's, that's an agreement that, which is really basically one deed. It's called a deed of dedication for that. Um, I know, I don't see anything that, nothing has come up that I think is, and Diego told me, is there any other weird, different public, uh, infrastructure in this design?
No, there is an existing sewer line, I'll point it on both here, to the lift station from here, there's a main hole. And the easement ran all the way here. That's existing, I think that, uh.
And I'm okay with that for the utility easement.
It's shown there, but that's existing.
Yeah.
This one right here. That's actually existing to this lift station.
Okay.
Does that come out of the existing development? There's a main hole here, main hole here.
So, well.
I might add one comment, that, uh, that lift pump was put in about seventeen years ago.
Okay.
Grocery store was built. And so different engineering company, different counsel, different attorney. And so we provided whatever they asked for. And I don't know if it, if it was just an easement. But what we're gonna do is deed that outlot. And your attorney can prepare the, the instrument. And we'll deed that outlot, outlot to the city. And so, it's really more, we're, we're giving more land now than, than, which we used before. So, that's what happened. It was built for the grocery store about seventeen years ago. But it was built, it was designed for the home developments.
Okay. I like this sidewalk idea. Yeah. Yes.
Is there sidewalks throughout this part, or just on the?
Yes ma'am. Uh, so there's sidewalk on this side of the horseshoe right here, this interior part.
Interior part.
All of that will be built after the homes are. Except for this, we're gonna put in because technically Harland is responsible for this. And so he'll put in a fourth foot there in front of the lift station.
On scene, I agreed voluntarily, put in a sidewalk here, a crossing here. The crossings are over a thousand dollars. They're not special things. So, uh, Bob asked me if I would, it was shown to stop here on the plans. We're pretty preliminary plans, the planning commission originally. So I agreed to let it cross and over. That's in the city. Well, it's, you know, you'll make a story, it's out here.
So. I'm gonna make this match in my head. Sorry, I'm trying to get it. So this is Fourth Street.
So that's an extension.
You're laughing at you. Relax.
Extension of the street where it goes. These are existing houses here. These are the houses that are here.
Those are, okay.
And so the territorial plaza would be over here, the old church and territorial plaza is here.
So this flash pad is like right here?
Yep.
That's right. You see there's.
Commercial lots are out there.
Right up here, it's not divided up yet.
You have divided the commercial lots.
The reason we aren't divided, we don't know what somebody wants.
How many lots are in this?
Actually, I want to ask you guys, um, Mr. Wells, would you come back to the podium? Only because it will make you talk louder. And then, that would break the record and people could hear.
Sure, sorry.
Go ahead with your conversation.
So, this is projected to be done in the next two years, is that what I understand these, this addition?
We don't have a projection for when the builder's gonna complete it. We expect they will quickly, hopefully. But that's what the letter of credit is for.
Okay.
They're gonna fill the sidewalk as they can.
Yes, okay.
It's the same developer that's done the new part of Kinderwells.
That's right.
You hope, I mean, so, so long as you close as you expect.
It's a thing.
I just.
The city says no problems.
Can be extended.
Thank you, Diego. Thank you, Mr. Wells.
So Tammy, the, these letters with line of credit, if needed with a notification, they can be extended?
Okay, you're, you're going back to the last agenda item.
Uh-huh.
But, um, if, if we were to agree to extend the past two years, the letter of credit could be extended.
Okay.
But I'm not sure.
I, I got you.
That our ordinance would allow us to.
Okay.
I saw that wording and I've been figuring curves.
Okay.
But, I'm not sure we could do it.
Correct. I got you. Thank you, dear.
I have, I have now a review plat, I'm on my, uh, language.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Justin, any questions? Sarah? I'll ask Aaron last. Guys have any questions?
Thanks. Thanks, mayor. I just make a motion.
Just bring in a bit of levity.
Thank you.
I second it.
Go ahead.
Quick draw.
Standing here, Aaron?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Mayor, can we ask that you take a break for just a minute and sign the plans?
Sure. If it's okay with, uh, Tammy.
We're gonna file them in the morning.
Or planning commission and.
Whenever the county, whenever we get through the process. So, it would, it would save hunting you down if you could just sign it.
She does have her seals, we, um, we don't actually have to, we should seal. So the first seal will go in that box. But, uh, if you go ahead and if you want to take that, it's your call.
Take your timeout to do that real quick.
It shouldn't take you but a minute or two.
What is there, two copies?
Yeah, we got two copies.
She's already got one side of the planning commission.
Mayor, I'll make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess?
Second.
Please, I didn't, I don't want a five-minute recess, hold on. Now I don't want to do it.
You're doing well, Mr. Wells, how are you?
Aaron?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Got those for Christmas.
Thank you.
Pause on this, sir.
There's a stop.
Okay, just stop.
Getting a lot done over there.
Oh goodness.
Is that not signed, is that?
She's the smart one.
So might as well be protected. Sure.
Uh, yeah, well, I live, I live out towards Pawnee probably, between Glencoe and Pawnee.
She's got one.
She said planning commission signed it and everything last night, so. What do you mean? You need music? Uh, not to use mine.
That's correct. Do you need me to bring the? Do you need me to bring a flare? Have you tried a good flare? Oh, ew.
I know.
You're not wrong.
I know. Who kids you about such things?
I am a sharpie.
Paper made ink joy seven hundred RE is a requirement. If that doesn't make you. I mean, honestly. Shh, be every.
Yeah.
Oh, shake in a batch.
I did.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
We thank all of you for your time and consideration.
I know, it's just this one.
Might be what it is.
He looks like a cowboy, didn't he?
He does, with his, like, you know, haydo things on him. With their ass and cowboy hat.
Has.
casual cowboy?
We're still in recess, all right, we're not.
I have read so much today, I think I'm getting crazy.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, gentlemen.
It's good, it's hard to beat my cheap pink honey bag.
Sorry ma'am.
It's snazzy, they're one of my favorites.
Kids at school are like, don't touch, touch his pants. When I touch your wrists off, if she's missing a pen, she'd be like, Carla. I didn't touch your stupid pen. I still Casey's pants. Not bought school supplies and I can't tell you how. Just take it for a break. Are we ready?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, are we ready to reestablish a quorum, ma'am?
Yes.
Just trying.
Okay, Mayor?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Okay, item number eighteen, consideration, discussion and possible action to approve expense in the amount of thirteen thousand fifty dollars to A and B Pest Control for year two of a fertilizer and herbicide application program for common areas and ball fields located at Peters Park, Dixon Park and the Oklahoma Territorial Plaza utilizing CARES Act funding as authorized at the July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting.
This I can talk about.
Yay.
Yeah. Um, it's the same price as last year. The reason it's on the agenda is that it is above the city manager's spending of ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Well, I, I had a quick question. I'm sorry. So. Did we, I read, I saw in our, our packet that, uh, from SASSA we got a bill that had some herbicide stuff on it.
Last year, SASSA, that was part of what they did as part of their field maintenance.
Okay.
So last year's price, when, um, Mr. Wells quoted the thirteen zero five zero, he broke it out into, if I do ball fields. he broke it out into if I do ball fields, if I don't do ball fields.
Like common areas?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right, yeah, if I do ball fields or if I do all of it.
Okay.
Right, and so, last year we paid, not for the ball fields, so we did not pay thirteen zero five zero.
Okay, I remember reading that.
Twenty seven hundred times three, I think, so we paid last year.
And so, this item agenda now adds the ball fields. Bonus. You got it, I was just due diligence, sorry.
So, I still have a motion to approve.
Eric?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Item agenda nineteen. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to apply for fruit tree planting foundation grant to fund the planting of at least twenty fruit or nut bearing trees in Peters Park. Pretty straightforward, wasn't it?
Grant Scribe came up with this.
Mm-hmm.
I think Bob had like pecan trees.
That was in his manager's report.
Yeah, okay, so, yes, that's what I know about it.
Any thoughts from commission?
The trees.
From the tree sector.
I have hesitation about pecan trees. They have a hard time in our winter with ice storms. But just something to... What would you recommend?
They are a weaker tree, I think.
They are.
They, they typically are a weaker tree when it comes to the...
They're not pruned in maintenance.
Right.
Actually, as a matter of fact, most of the trees that broke in our town during the last ice storm were pecan.
They'd be a hat.
So, it's a, or lacemark, there were a lot of lacemark that broke as well. It's definitely a concern. It doesn't concern me enough to not do it, but I just wanted us to stop and consider.
It will take some maintenance, definitely.
And the maintenance of the byproduct of a pecan tree, if it's not maintained, is, can be astronomical. And it can actually ruin your grass pretty easily, because they're very acidic. And it's hard to grow grass under a pecan tree.
I have one in my yard.
So, you know, we just spent a lot of money to spray for grass to be nice. I just wanna give you guys an insight on things that I have dealt with in the past.
There's some flexibility in the grant proposal, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think there's some flexibility, so...
There is. So, we could possibly ask for no pecan trees.
I mean, I think if I'm not mistaken, that's what I was looking for, is it says something about there's workshops and aftercare training or something like that? If selected for, here it is, I found it. If selected for a donation, the Free Tree Planting Foundation will provide all trees and shrubs, organic soil amendments, equipment, planting volunteers, and onsite orchard design work, workshops, and aftercare training.
I just don't know.
I don't know.
How long does that last?
Yeah, right.
Like, I, I think the longevity of it. I am all for planting trees, do not get me wrong. I just want us to make sound decisions about the types of trees that we're planting.
Well, I'm on a committee at school for green schools dot org. And we're working on beautification and tree planting at the, you know, media school. Not sure how this could correlate or benefit. I know there's the educational part of this that sounds very interesting to me. Which could be done in the school possibly, or, I don't wanna speak out of turn or through the library. But I'm like you, I'm definitely interested in it, but the concerns of which type of tree you get would be my question. So, you, you probably as well too. Type to get.
Yeah, I just wonder where the flexibility is on choosing what you, if you're chosen, what you can and can't plant. I was unclear about seeing anything about...
No. In the timeline on the grant, I did not find a timeline on it.
I'm sorry, I don't know if I have the answer.
Because tree planting is better if it's done in the fall, if I'm not, if I'm not wrong. So, I don't know what the timeline of this would be as far as if we instigated it now, is it gonna be ready to plant in the fall? Or do we need to table to another month, Tammy, and get all of our questions asked?
Get the grant up and rolling?
That's true.
Within the grant application, the donation agreement, mayor, there's a paragraph thirteen says, once both parties have agreed to the order of donation and confirmed a specific date and time for the planting.
Okay.
So, it's...
So, I, I would have to, and I'm making an assumption, but I think there would be quite a bit of flexibility once the grant's awarded.
Okay. You know, that's the way the green schools one is too. There's a lot of flexibility on the timelines because of planting seasons. So, thank you for finding that. I read through it, I just missed it.
Yeah, it's okay, I did the same thing and I'm having a hard time remembering what I wrote today.
I guess before we proceed with this, I think it would be prudent to talk to like the county horticulturist or if there is a arborist that gives us direction on if there are, I mean, pecan trees do well in Oklahoma. Obviously, there's people that have farms for that particular nut in general. I just, I would feel better about making a decision if we had someone who was familiar with it, say yes, this is a good option for us. Tammy, if we go ahead and move forward with the application and are chosen, are we then contractually obligated to continue with accepting the trees or can we back out at some point?
There's a...
I don't know that we're ever...
We're not forced to accept a grant.
Yeah, ever required to accept.
So, we could get the grant application started and going and while we're waiting to see if we're chosen, we could explore other options with experts and that kind of thing and what we would choose in terms of to plant and when to plant.
And if we're awarded it, and maybe even if we're not, but if we are, they may have someone, an expert that they can send to...
Sounds like there's a lot of education. Yeah, so I think we would want to explore that because it would also be free with them. As well, my vote is to go ahead and make a motion to approve. And then, we'll all just do our due diligence to research and see what's available. Converse is fruit, I just imagine a world where a kid could go grab an apple at the park, so, that's kind of where I am. There's plenty of community resources and community volunteering options for high schoolers and middle school kids within the community, so they can do that.
I heard a motion and a second.
Yes, I seconded it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear anybody second that.
You're fine, sorry.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Bottom? Yes ma'am.
Yes.
Moving right along, item agenda number twenty. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to apply for the Firehouse Subs Foundation grant to purchase thermal cameras for the fire department. This sounds pretty cool.
I agree.
I'm... I don't have any questions.
I make a motion for the Firehouse Subs.
Absolutely, I second it. This is wonderful.
Um, yes ma'am.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is that the easiest one all night? Right. Okay, new business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Anyone? Nope? Pass. Agenda item twenty-two. Motion that they, we adjourn the regular meeting.
Second.
Eric?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Is there any doubt we wanna do adjournment?
Yeah, four seconds on that one.
Rachel, you want public works?
Yes ma'am.
Ready to call a quorum?
Call the...
Call the meeting, yes. Call the need to order, establish a quorum. Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, yes ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay, consideration and action on consent agenda. Have any questions over the consent agenda? Regular meeting, purchase orders, financial report, and manager's report.
Motion to approve.
I second.
Eric?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Public appearances, petitions, remonstrances, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the city commission members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda. Okay. Five. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to accept Davis sanitation proposal for wastewater solid sledge disposal.
Is this something...
We have to do it annually and it's the, is the, when everything goes to waste water, treat a plant, they treat it, treat it, treat it. They make the gray water, which can then go into the river, it's solid that's left over. And so, it's for Davis to haul that waste away.
You know, off the top of your head, what an increase this one is?
I don't recall, I'm sorry. It was not, it was not crazy.
Thank you.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Motion to approve.
One second.
Okay, new business.
I'm so sorry, I don't know, just second.
I am so sorry, I got ahead of myself and didn't wait on you.
You know what, Bob's normally here for me to whisper to, and since he's not, I must've leaned over and I'm making her crazy, so I apologize for that.
It's okay, it's okay. Are you being a distraction, Tammy?
Totally, I apologize.
Tammy's talking in class.
Sitting next to the teacher.
Uh, Eric?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, yes ma'am. Justin?
Yes.
Okay, now new business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Staff, anything else? Good. Okay, commissioners? Alright, I make a motion that we adjourn the public works authority. Like, twelve twenty.
One second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Alright. Perkins Industrial Development Authority.
Renee, you've waited all day.
Yay Renee, she's here, look at you. Waited patiently. So, call the order, roll call, and establish a quorum, ma'am.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
Bottom?
Yes ma'am.
Eric?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Uh, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve purchase order in the amount of two thousand eight hundred, five hundred dollars for Mike Green CPA to perform an audit.
Same amount as last year.
So, this is a yearly thirty-one hundred. That's all the bill, so it's just, do I?
I was mumbling, I'm mumbling, I'm good, ma'am.
Commissioners, any questions?
No.
Motion to approve.
One second.
She's quick with the second tonight.
Eric?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Bottom?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Uh, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve purchase order in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to Interworks to provide computer software support for QuickBooks program.
Because PIDA does not meet on a regular basis. Last year, we had an issue with the program and we had to have a special meeting to approve the purchase order so we could have them repair it. This is all, at this time that we do for PIDA is have an audit and maintain their financial records and QuickBooks system. These are the only two purchase orders I could foresee for the whole upcoming year.
Upcoming year for PIDA.
Something else, cool, fun, exciting.
Motion to approve.
Eric?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Bottom?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
One, I'll second. I was just pausing for that.
Eric?
I'll take that.
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, yes ma'am. Justin?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Thank you ladies.
Thank you everyone.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Hey Tiffany? Bob's usually the one that turns off the back thing, I don't know. Just be steady. I do not. Okay, she knows how. See how this time I didn't even, I didn't even attempt to get up this time.
Yeah. That's science, science school.
Are we doing the chairs? So, here's please. I'm gonna explain a little bit.
It's working.
I was like, this is fancy. Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you everybody.
Thank you.